Alright, so this is the Wellington Board of Education Policy Committee. It is July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. It is four eighteen P M. Hi, everybody. Um, I am still nasally as ever, sorry. So if um you do not understand what I said, please stop me today. Um. There are a few items on here today that are there's actually two on the agenda, and I can share my screen and show you. Let me just click over here. So I was hoping to have um from the attorney, the equal opportunity stuff, the Title Nine stuff, and the bullying stuff back from her just between vacations and things, and we want to make sure we're not. I'm not putting something in front of you prematurely. Um, I don't have all the information from her yet, so uh we'll just keep that on there. I want to make sure that's right. And so I always say a lot of policy stuff is legal. Uh, those are two very legal uh based policies language wise. Um, and the equal opportunity, the nondiscrimination Title Nine actually hits several of our policies. It's not just one. We listed one on here. Um, but basically through our conversation, actually, there's a student section. There's a Board of Ed section, and there's also a uh staff section. So we're trying to get a model policy for you around that that hits all of them. Um, so I don't have information for B and D today from her yet. Um, so just started without letting you know. So it'll move faster. So um your first item there that is the cellphone piece, and I figured uh if it makes sense with all of you, start with the data um that we got from the survey, just a little nod of the heads, if that's okay with you. Okay. So, and I clicked Record, right? Just make sure.
The light's on.
It is li- it's light up, it's lit up?
I think so, yeah.
Sorry, I'm just gonna make sure I did that. Yes, it is, okay. So this is a cellphone survey that we did from uh teaching staff uh and um from parents. And so I, even though it's a lot of information in one slide, I thought it was easier just to look at and have it all on one. So I pulled it into one picture here. So this is the teacher portion of it. We had thirty nine responses. Um, and I I might have paraphrased the question a little bit just to shorten it up. But it's basically that we had of the thirty nine responses that we got, fifteen were from center, twenty one from hall, and three people checked that they worked at both schools, okay? Um. The uh do you do you find, oh, I wrote find, find, student cell phones to be a distraction in your classroom, fourteen said yes, um twenty nine said no. And then I put in there just a general comment that um the people that said that they they thought it was a distraction, I thought this comments of all of the comments of the thing kind of captured this uh same thought the best. So that students are regular checking for notifications on their phone. They're heading to the bathroom to to have, you know, social media updates or conversations. Um, they're missing content, obviously. Uh, and then that there's the back and forth between students just uh with posting things uh in their own communications. Um, again, things that you would say over the phone that you might not say in person uh just creates some some distractions during the day as well. So uh that was the, I thought, a comment that kind of captured what was was seen in that that comment. Uh, any educational reasons for a cellphone? The majority said no. Um, the yeses were around, uh I would say uh and and you have access, you saw this data as well, was like, hey, every now and then uh if a student wants to take a picture of something or scan a Q R code, it was things like that, but it was uh fewer than, you know, obviously, a lot fewer than the no's. And the staff side, would you would you support a a ban on cell phones during class? Yes, was was the majority. Would you support a policy that bans cell phones during the school day? Yes, was the the large majority. What areas would you support cellphone use? Nowhere, twenty two, ten other locations. It was interesting, the other locations were things like the hallways, the cafeteria, the boss, things like that. The majority of these uh nowhere, obviously, are, you know, people for other locations were not sitting in classrooms. Um. And then seven, is there anything else you want to add? It was general comments that were, you know, were made for and against cell phones. So whatever they post, you know, whichever one they supported, you know, it was I don't think it was any earth, anything earth shattering from from uh that perspective. So that's on the teacher's side of this. Uh, and then on the 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 parent feedback side, um does your child have a cellphone? There was a lot that did. I did not get into the second and third child for the data because I thought overall, it gave us a pretty good picture. There was a lot of consistent comments. Um, do they bring it to school? A lot of them that haven't bring it to school. That's the bottom line. Um, do you believe there's a reason for them to have a cellphone in class? Yes, thirty nine, no, one thirty two. The yes reasons um were not necessarily connected to in class, though. So the app, they had the opportunity to write more. And uh it was like arrival at home, so they could let their family, you know, their their family member would know they were home if they were using an app or they could call. Um. The the concept that our quote, our phones are quote unquote shut off at a certain time for clubs, so it's harder to get the main office makes sense, like, hey, I want to be able to get access to my kid after school. Uh, if there's a family scheduling issue or they're traveling between two separate homes, if there's a a family that has custody, you know, in in two different locations. If they're walking home or on the bus and then during an emergency, if something happens in school, that was a comment that happened uh was there a lot, uh only for an emergency if something was was to happen. Um. Is there anything else you would like to add regarding student cell phones in school? Again, they're very similar to what I have on the snapshot for the in-class. It was a very repetitive for those comments. And the same thing, is there a a reason for them to have the cellphone in school? Again, same comments, they were not connected to classroom activities. The comments were a hundred percent connected to what you see in here. Uh, before or after school, um, you know, walking home from the bus transportation, things like that. So um. I'll let you chime in on this. I don't, I was not surprised uh by that data. Um, I was um the only piece that I say that I expected to see a little bit more for was uh academic use in classrooms, but the comments were really around that that students have Chromebooks and the majority of the work, if not, uh, you know, all of the work can be done using those district-controlled Chromebooks. Um. There, those are monitored by us, they're they're, you know, they're, they have the 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 Novus has the control of those Chromebooks. Whereas the uh cell phones, we don't. The, I have a meeting with the uh yonder folks on August twelfth. Uh, they obviously are very busy because I booked a meeting and it was weeks out was the earliest that they could meet with me. So just to get some more information from them, uh if that's something that you are interested in pursuing. And then the last thing I'll say before I just open it up to you and you can add your your comments around this. Um. There's been a lot of talk about policy and cell phones in a variety of resources, Cabe, uh on the national level. Uh. Manchester being local, I, they don't have anything in their actual policy yet. They didn't even update their policy. They did it more from a from a handbook standpoint. Um, but people that are entirely removing cellphone from school, meaning students are not accessing accessing them during the day uh are seeing success, and the success they're seeing is in the form of fewer disciplinary uh referrals. Better attention are the two things that are they're identifying. Students are not worried about that phone during class, uh, you know, taking a pee quick, going to the bathroom to to use those phones. So there is some success stories I think people are seeing, and I think Manchester is branching out now because of it beyond uh one school. Um. But from a policy standpoint, you really need, probably ought to figure out what direction you want to go. And then we can craft the policy and adjust the policy, this personally owned electronic mobile devices used in school of how we would adjust that policy depending on what you would like to do from there. Thoughts on the survey or I didn't do the cell phones. Just go, I I just the four of you.
Question is yonder. I don't know what yonder is.
So yonder is the um, the way people are 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 accessing or are taking care of this cellphone issue right now is they're doing a couple, one of two things, really, that you I can see. Is they're buying those pocket charts as option one. The pocket chart goes at the front of the classroom, student walks and they drop it in. Um, from a classroom perspective, I think for the most part that works. Uh, from a school perspective, you are still seeing issues in hallways. It's just not the same. They can, they're still seeing issues on the bus where students are taking pictures, things like that. Um. Whether, and then the yonder pouch is basically picture just like it, it almost looks like a cloth pouch. When students walk into school, they put their phone into a pouch, it's magnetic. It's locked during the day, students cannot open it. And at the end of the other way out, uh they use that yonder pouch, and there's, it's a magnetic thing, and it opens it back up. Uh, the complaint for from most people about the yonder pouches is the the statement of I want my student to be able to access my child, to be able to access their phone if there's edger ever uh a a significant emergency. And yonder has said, you can cut the pouch open if it if there's a significant emergency. That's their their uh solution. So that's yonder is uh kind of the got the market right now. That is the brand of this pouch. It's magnetic that students can access, but the that is all the way beginning of the day to the end of the day. You walk into school, it's the first thing you do on your way out. You can uh get you get access to your cellphone again. Whereas the pouches, uh, you're really dropping that into that spot for a short period of time.
Um, that was what I was kind of visualizing was the wall, the wall thing. I think number one question to check with teachers is how disruptive would that be in their day to make sure they all get in there and would that be time consuming, whereas the
No, I think it's routine. I think it's routine. I think it would be, you know, it's it's something that's pretty easy to set up. The disruption would be, you know, you have to figure out if if phones are ringing or that you're hearing notifications go off. I think that's a training thing that's that can be easily taken care of. Um, and we would have, you know, procedures for that. Uh, it doesn't remove the issue of the, you know, as soon as students are in the hallways grabbing, you know, being going back on their phone, social media.
And lunch. They would have it at lunch. Um, hmm. Hey, thank you.
Alright, so I have a couple of things. Um. I uh did a little bit more of a deep dive and and Phil, if you don't mind, um if I share something. If you don't mind.
Yep, just changing the thing. Sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Um, so I went a little bit, a little bit further, and there's still ways to go um as far as what I was looking at here. Um, so I took, this is just, this is the teacher visualization, and something that's important to note is that um of the twenty nine teachers who says that cell phones weren't a distraction, um, the majority of them thirteen or actually about half of them thirteen are at CES where obviously cell phones are not going to be really be a thing in the elementary schools. But the hall teachers had a bit more, uh, you know, of a of a yes response there. So I thought that that was interesting um and an important thing to note uh when it, because on the surface, it looks like a lot of teachers don't feel it's a distraction. So people might question, why would we take action? But it's you know, it's not a distraction where you wouldn't expect it to be a distraction. Um, and the other thing, I don't know if this is sharing because I only did one. Um, can you see this?
It's the same picture you were on before. Yeah.
It's the parent or is the teacher?
Uh, it's HMS Teacher's Visual.
Okay, I have to do.
Is the tab you're on right now.
Yeah, I have to.
Stop sharing, click it and then reshare it. Yeah.
That's annoying.
Yeah, it is.
Uh, parent, there we go. So this is kind of a a simple visualization of of the easy elements of parents, and I I do want to go and categorize the reasons too, because I think those can be categorized very easily. Um. So this is CES in the majority, you know, eighty. So I took all the kids, I took the second, all the second responses and added them to the end. So there's a much larger sample size here. Um, but you are right, it doesn't really change the kind of the core narrative, but you can see that, you know, the majority of CES kids don't have cell phones, so there's not really much to do to look at there because they're not really an issue. Um, when you go into the the hall parents, um, you have ninety seven said that they have a cellphone and eighty seven bring it to school. So it's almost ninety percent do bring it to school. Um, and there is a bit more. So where kids do have cell phones, there's a bit more input from the parents as to them having them during the day, and I think that one of the things I noticed on some of the additional responses was um a lot of people took kind of took issue with the word ban, and I guess that's a very good point is that we don't, it's not necessarily a a ban per se. Um, but maybe looking at it as tighter controls. Um, this one has a lot of blanks. This is the uh is there a reason to have a cellphone in school? Um, and this is the big difference with the hall parents who have the majority of kids with cell phones is that they don't feel there's a reason to have them in class, but a lot of them feel there's a reason to have them in school. So looking at that, and that's why I want to, I want to categorize the the reasons why a little bit too. Um. We have to really strike a good balance of keeping them out of the classroom as well as still letting them have them during school. And I see a lot of the points that the parents made of after-school activities or or schedule changes I'm a little less convinced about, but definitely after-school activities, that makes a lot of sense. And the emergencies make a lot of sense too. Um, so I think there's a lot more I can grab from the survey. I just kind of did this on a surface level and that what throws it off a little bit is there's a lot of blank responses, especially I think when we did the second child, it didn't include um the school question because there are about thirty five blanks, and I think that I saw that in one of the comments. So it either didn't come in properly or it wasn't there. Um. But I think we have a lot of support for tighter controls. Um, my idea right now is probably to share out this data with the larger group. Um, the larger board of ed group and see what, get get some other ideas from them. I do have I I think the yonder pouches is the is the right path, but I don't know if we have to go almost that expensive. I I honestly think that we could start something with something simple like one of those shoe holders on the door and 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 I'm talking about for hall, just in the morning in homeroom when they come in, drop them in and they're there. Or you could have them dispersed through all the classes and they can carry them, but there was concern about like you mentioned disruption by lockers and lockers bathrooms, that kind of stuff. Um, so it's going to be a tough a tough thing to please everybody, but I think we have enough information that we can probably make some pretty, pretty good informed decisions, but I'd like some additional input from the other members too.
When you broke it out, so it seemed like the parents at in at hall um felt there was no need in the classroom, but there was a need in the school.
Yep.
And I wonder if that means they would like the kids to have their phones in between at lunch. No, that's not.
I didn't, I didn't get that from the survey. The comments that came out. And that's what I said, that that was the one thing. It wasn't academic, and it wasn't, some of, some people may have said, hey, in between, that's fine. But the majority of reasons from parents for why to have a cellphone, and that was the one co- uh question he was just uh reviewing there was really around after-school things or comments to my kids, I want access, you know, it was not around uh during the during the the middle of the school day or between classes. Uh, I didn't see that in the comments.
So you feel that they would, parents would be okay if the kids turned in their phones when they arrived and took them back when they were leaving? That that would. Brianna, what do you think?
Uh, a lot because I look at it from a teacher's perspective, a parent perspective. Um, so in Ashford where I teach, they, within the last couple of years, started something similar. They have a lockbox in the homeroom and all phones go in there at homeroom time, and then the students go back to that classroom right before dismissal to retrieve their devices. And our principal knew going out, that was a pretty strict thing to pass by the parents and everyone. She was expecting some pushback, but she and her team really believed that that was the best way to approach this, and she believed that it would help her climate a lot. Um, and so she used this strategy. She, I asked her if she had pushback. She said mostly the parents were fine with it. They were happy to know the devices were in the building but secured. Um, any kind of transportation communication that needed to happen between the families and the children was able to occur right before dismissal. So kids would know like what was going on there. Um. She said a couple of parents didn't like the idea and said, well, what if my kid just doesn't give you, give the homeroom teacher their phone in the morning? And her best answer was, well, that's our policy. That's what we're asking people to do. If I don't see your child's phone, then it's not a, it's not an issue. Um, because then we assume they don't have it, I guess, is the big picture. Um. I like it because having the phones in the hallway, cafeteria, whatever, to me, that really doesn't help us with one of our biggest problems, which is distraction and um videoing things in the school building that shouldn't be getting done also, things like that. So for me, it's all or nothing. Um, and the one problem I had, I don't know why you would pick the yonder over something like a box, except that my one hang up with the boxes is in the case of an emergency, who's going to grab those boxes and get them out of the building to, because that's the parent's property, so it gets a little sticky there. And then we had an incident one time where a teacher um had to leave school early because of a doctor's appointment, and she took the key to the lockbox with her accidentally. So you had a classroom of children who could not get into the lockbox to get their devices, and there were some very unhappy children, as you can imagine, but also um unhappy parents about that. And so those were two kind of things that I've seen come out of the lockbox idea that we would probably have to kind of work around or figure out, but I don't think it's that hard to solve those problems. Um. Putting it in the pocket charts. It's still there. I don't know. For me, I, like I said, I think for me personally, it's like an all or nothing thing. And then I keep asking myself too, like, well, what did we used to do back in the olden days when there were not cell phones? You went through the school's office. So if a soccer game or something is canceled, they would have had to call all the parents from the office. And now we have things like email and you know, like a K twelve alert or backpack, whatever. There's all these different things we can do now, text alerts to tell people when that kind of stuff happens. Um, and I do think it's largely the transportation part is the reason why people want their children to have their phones. I think that parents too have gotten this used to the security of being able to reach their kids anytime they want to, and they don't want to give that up either, which I totally understand. Um, and the other reason for me, it has helped to know that my child has her phone is when she's not feeling well but good enough to go to school and she's um nervous or a little bit anxious about how she's her, how she is health-wise and can just check in quick and be like, okay, this is how I'm doing, and then I have a chance to soothe my child and say sounds like you're doing okay. Don't forget to drink your water. And then the kid just goes on through their day. Now, they should be able to have that kind of rapport with the school nurses where they can approach them that way. Um, which is again, like how it used to be back in the good old days. So that is something, you know, that can be handled with the school, um, not having to do with the phones at all too.
Emergencies could go through the office too. If there was a family emergency, that could go through the office.
Ultimately, it it has to anyways, to be honest with you. If it's going to be a picker or something telling the student first, this, we don't, you know, if a student comes to the office and says, I'm going to be picked up, we still have to confirm that with a parent or the guardian, like it it doesn't just automatically happen. So you still have to talk to the office in in those situations.
Sometimes it helps the kids know a little bit before the end of the day, so
Yeah.
Maybe there can be some kind of like find the middle of the day when that student is in a study hall or whatever and have the office just shoot him a quick, you know, phone call or whatever, so they know that's going to happen ahead of time. That's one way to get around it. And like the comment the parent made about how contacting the office when clubs are going on is difficult, that I totally get to and sports and what your bus is coming back from the game, like where are you? So I know what time to pick you up. Like, I don't want to take that away from parents and children. I think that communication is important and it probably helps the staff, honestly, in that situation, because then they don't have to call everybody um and tell them, you know, where they are, whatever. So those are my ideas.
I think you're really looking it it from the whole school perspective, and and I agree with Arthur, the data was really the center school is is much smaller, not really an issue. It's the middle school. Um, you do have some fourth graders with cell phones, but it's much more manageable. Um, the middle school, you're really looking at like a seven thirty to two thirty. Outside of that window, sports, whatever, going on the bus, the under pouch, if you did something like that, it's not open anymore. Um. Uh, the lockbox piece to me uh that you're using uh in your district right now, Brianna, is an interesting concept. I bet it was cheaper than a yonder pouch, uh and that was why the solution. Um. I can see the hassle of that and uh the strain of that in a true emergency uh being an issue. Um, I do think uh as a parent myself, something happens, having my child's phone in a yonder pouch on them and having the ability to cut it open uh is pretty powerful. Um, I think that we would all want that opportunity if we were ever in a situation like that. Um, direct line, um, and you lose that in a lockbox. You know, you you lose that opportunity. Um. From the standpoint of support, uh I think you would have a lot of, based upon the survey data that you saw, I mean, you got a lot of feedback, a lot of parent feedback on that survey. And I think there were very few people that really talked about what I'm going to call the seven thirty to two thirty block. The majority of the conversation, the comments are around two thirty plus. Transportation, the walk home, clubs and sports. Right? It wasn't academics. Uh, it wasn't, I want, you know, Arthur to be able to text me when he's in the cafeteria. It wasn't those types of comments. Um.
The students would carry the pouch around, but it would be locked?
Correct.
That's how that works.
They put it right in and it's a a magnet, and uh I think you have to take this, the approach that Brianna just said. So if a student doesn't put a cellphone into a yonder pouch, they don't have their phone that day is the what you expect. Uh, the, if it does come out, it is uh then delivered to the office. Uh, but it does stay with them, with that student for the day. And there's basically, and I haven't seen this in action yet, uh I've only read about it, but basically there's a couple points where students pass by, they can just move their uh pouch past a yonder, you know, thing, and it and it just allows the the pouch to open up and they can get their phone and they can leave their pouch.
And you do that at the end of the day, they go by the reader and.
Correct. You do it on the way in and then on the way out. Yeah.
So I just took a quick look at I I read about the under pouches because that's what, that's what John was saying that they have in Manchester.
Yeah.
Um, but I never really looked at the design and everything. So basically, it looks like kind of um how I mean, hesitate to say it, but how uh stores do their um security, the security measures, it's just a giant magnet. So there probably is a possibility in case of a true emergency to have one of those in the teacher's desk or something, and she can just, he or she can just come by and unclick all of them. Um. I think that wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility, just need a strong enough, set of strong enough magnets. Um. But the other question I wanted to ask Phil is what is our I guess jurisdiction is kind of the technical way of putting it. What's our jurisdiction as far as the bus goes? Do, do, does the school set the rules on the bus or does the bus company set the rules on the bus?
So it's it's a little bit of combination of both. Um, but it's it's, we are hiring them and it's our rules on the bus. So um as far as cell phones go, you know, students, I think they're allowed to use them. Some students have a long ride. It's like, hey, You know, students, I think they're allowed to use them. Some students have a long ride. It's like, hey, keep your music down. The, some of the bus drivers don't like the AirPods or the, the headphones, because if they're gonna give emergency directions. They want students to be able to hear them, things like that. It's, it's again, balance. It's, it's within reason, but we set those expectations.
Okay, cuz there were, there were some comments about students having that long ride and having something to do on the long ride. And then there's other, other comments about pictures and videos being posted, things inappropriately being watched. So it's like, that's another area where we have to kind of strike a decent balance. And I don't, I don't yet know what that balance is.
Yeah, we still deal with, uh, and we would still deal with those types of situations. So you know, if there's a referral, there's something that comes up like that, that's on the boss, we would still deal with it. Um. But. It's a much smaller, you know, the number of incidents, in my opinion, would be greatly reduced. Just dealing with transportation, uh, you know, as opposed to all day long. As an assistant, I'm gonna tell you, as an assistant principal, when I was in Tallinn, um. I can't tell you the number of referrals that I would just sit and go through that were cellphone related. Uh, just referral after referral after referral after referral. And at some point you just go, something's gonna change and this is why we're, where we're at.
Can, can different staff members have the magnets?
I don't know enough about that yet. That's a question I will ask. That's a, that's a good question.
There might be a special circumstance where um, a student may need like middle of the day check in. I'm thinking more of our like five oh four I E P people.
So anything, that's a good point, anything special education or five oh four related. Can have specific uh, accommodations put in that may be different than this policy. So uh, which is standard, right? It's, 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 you know, if there's a significant, significant anxiety. And I need direct access to a text message, something to a parent, something like that. If it's the thing that's gonna work. Um, we can write that into a five oh four and that would be a combination, an accommodation we would, we would still be able to do. Um, where it wouldn't go in i- is if the student was abusing it. We would look for other strategies and just to say, look, it's disruptive, this is not working, you know. It's meant for this and it's being used for this. We, that would be something that we would, we would manage internally. I think that'd be few and far between though.
Yeah, so do I. You were saying something about having magnets in desk drawers, like can those go with the fire sheets or the emergency clipboards or whatever?
So what I, I don't know is if people, if students put their yonder pouch in their backpack, that they, I, I don't, I, I would assume that's what they do. Um, and some kids might take them out, not take them out during a fire drill. Like we don't say, hey, get your jacket. It's fire alarm goes off, out we go. Um.
I don't mean during like a fire drill. I mean during like an actual emergency, your staff member is gonna grab their class list and their, you know, emergency plan.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard you say scissors. Okay. Um.
Yeah, I'll ask about the magnet piece or, or if there's additional pieces that can be purchased that, you know. He- here's the thing is, is that you also have a decision to make and I'm, I'm really cautious to say this. But the person that made the comment, it was a teacher about the QR codes. Uh, I think they're a hundred percent spot on and taking pictures. Um. Students still need to learn how to use cellphones. Uh, they're not going away, right? So is there ever a time that you're going to feel comfortable with a teacher if they could? Uh, I don't know the cost. I don't know if that's even possible for a teacher to allow a class. To unlock their phones to do X and then lock their phones back up. It's like, hey, but if you're on social media. You lose that, you know, or you, I, I don't know, it then becomes a, a staff member managing it. Um. That's something that you'd have to, you know, process to and consider if you wanted to do that. Because as soon as you put a magnet, just like a key, right? Uh, somebody has a key and now they're responsible for it. And if they're, they leave their door unlocked. And it's supposed to be locked, that's an issue. Um, because they have the key. Magnet could be no, no different. Kids now, you know, got their phone. Open, is that something that you would be okay with? We could, I'll ask about that though. I don't know, uh. Like Arthur said, is it just small machine? Is it, I don't know how exactly the size of it or, or what, how it works. Yeah.
Here, let me share real quick again, I can actually.
Yeah. You have a good deal of it?
I have the uh, website up. I have two websites up actually, seeing how strong rare earth magnets are. And so this is the yonder pouch.
Yep.
Um, and here, it connects here and here's the magnet that will release the, basically pull the mechanism back down to open it up. Um, something like this, it depends on how much the magnet can pull. But if you get, like I was looking up rare earth magnets, if you get one of those, more than likely, it's gonna do the job. I don't think there's anything specific on these pouches, cuz there's nothing, there's no um, there's no proprietary equipment that I can see on here. That, you know, it's not locked via electronic or anything. It's just a simple, it's a simple click. So, um, to your point Phil, just as easily as a teacher could leave the door open. A, a kid could pick up one of these, one of these magnets right here and bring it. So, I mean, it's, it's a good solution, but there's, there's always gonna be ways, ways around whatever solution we come up with, to be honest with you. So it's just kind of the best, the best for the situation.
Right, this is a matter of, this is what it's supposed to be. This is the expectation. You're setting the expectation if you were gonna do something like this. It needs to be in the pouch and locked during the day. If it's out, you, you know, your cellphone's gonna be in the office. Those are things that we can set as our regulations. Um, you know, if Anne decides to bring her cellphone in, she, she unlocks the pouch because she has a special magnet. And it's out in classroom and she doesn't have permission, Anne's gonna now drop off her cellphone in the office each day. She won't have access to it. That's just, we will take responsibility for that phone during the day because of, it's like the expectations.
Responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've set that and this is how we'll, we'll, you know, raise the bar if you're, if you're not following those expectations. So.
Um, have Mary Kay and some of the teachers had a chance to look this over and, and have some input into what they think about it?
About, about the yonder pouches?
Yeah.
Not be on the survey. I mean, I know, I know where Mary Kay stands, but she's one voice, right? Uh, I, I think from her perspective and, and I'm no different, we would see a significant number of uh, referrals go down. We would see, I think Arthur's initial comments about cellphones, we would see a consistent application. Across if we did something like this, it's easier to apply consistency. I think the shoe chart, the, you know, the, the shoe thing on the wall. Is an easier thing to not have consistency. It's, it's just, you know.
I would be curious to hear, you know, have the teachers have a chance to look at them and. See what they feel would be the easiest to, for them, you know.
I don't think it's gonna, if you did a yonder pouch, I don't think it's gonna in, impact teachers. Because I, I, the way I in, in see this is that students unlock their phones on the way out. It's, it's a, just part of a routine. You have some locations where they've gotta do it. They've got the spot. It's, you know. It, it, it's more of a, a routine established, you know, that it is a, a hindrance in a classroom.
Have to keep it. I guess this would all be determined later, but do they hang on to them till tomorrow or?
I don't think so. I think they stay. I think they stay in the school.
Okay.
So then are you adding time to your dismissal? Because everybody's in line to go through the magnet and put their pouch wherever they're supposed to?
Honestly.
Like, how long is this gonna take?
I don't think it takes long at all and I, I, and, and you could look at the number of um. Magnets that, things that you're gonna, exits that you're gonna buy. But between the number of kids that we have participating in clubs and sports and pickups and bosses. You know, we're not talking about, I mean, they empty, let's, let's face it, they, they empty Manchester High School, right? Manchester High School is way larger than the two hundred kids we have at all school. So if they can figure it out and there, it's not impacting their day. Uh, if we have to steal a minute or two of instructional time to add to that routine, I bet you buy back that. You know, a hundred times over of the disruption you, you're getting, not having during the day.
Yeah. I think it's a good time to um, look at this too. Because as you said, some districts have already like piloted and really been using it. So I'm curious to know what some of the drawbacks are in their opinion or like what was the biggest hurdles? So that we can try and get ahead of that too.
I know that the communication piece, it was really important in Manchester on this one. They made the decision to do something and they talked to the kids about the why. Um. And I think at first they got some pushback from students, but then it was like, hey, this is actually really good. It's working out for us. Um, but the marketing piece of this is important and making sure um, students understand why we're doing. What we're doing if we, if you go this route. Um, and parents understand why you're doing what you're doing if you go this route, that marketing piece is important. Uh, it's in, in the difference in the options, you know, leave it alone, a pouch on the wall. Uh, uh, you know, a yonder pouch. Those are your, really your three options. Um.
And can I say, I think I've mentioned this before and I hate to say it, but another piece is talking to the staff too. Like their cellphone use needs to have a, there has to be an expectation for that. And yeah, I know I've said this before, because some, I have a app I use to communicate with the students' parents on my phone. Usually that's what's on my body when we're walking here and there. I always show my class and tell them what I'm doing. So they know that I'm not just like scrolling through whatever while I'm supposed to be walking with them in the hallway.
Yeah.
It's hard for adults to do sometimes, um, especially when we have other things going on in our lives. But hopefully they will be good role models. And like you said, it is our job to teach them how to use these tools and use them appropriately. So hopefully that will be no problem there.
So I guess from your perspective and thinking about. But a, a change in policy, I, I heard Arthur say, bring, let's bring something like this to the full board just for discussion. Because if the full board is gonna support something, then you go back and you could write the policy. I don't think that's a bad take on it. Um. You could consider a couple of things. You could bring it to a full board at a separate meeting. Uh, and set the meeting up so that if parents wanted to chime in, uh, I don't know that you're going to get any different information, honestly. Than what you have already gotten out of a survey. Uh, and the reason I say that is um. Sometimes the people that think they're the loudest are going to get their way. And the survey data, in my opinion, is pretty clear. Like this would be supported. Uh, and, and people still want access to their kids after school, before school, the things that were. Repeated over in the survey. And I can, I can pull that information down for a little more, you know, specific information if you're gonna go that route. I could price out yonder pouches to go, what would this even cost us? Uh, I can find out the magnet issues. Um, I could not find any competitors, which is interesting. Uh, but I can do some more work to see if there's any competitors. Uh. You figure, how, how would you like to move forward with pursuing something like this?
I like bringing it to the full board possibly at the next meeting, just the information. Because at least um, that would give you time Phil to give prices too. Because I think that's also an important consideration is how much would this cost? Because I'm sure it's not, I'm sure it's not exorbitantly expensive, but I'm sure it's not cheap either. You're the only game in town. I mean, you said, said prices.
Right. I, I've heard about thirty bucks a pouch. I, I don't know if that includes the uh, the magnet piece, but thirty buck, uh, uh, let's face it, thirty bucks times. You know, two hundred in the grand scheme of things is, yeah, it's not.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Hold it at our next meeting. Is there a way um, to invite parents to um, have input during present to speak? Even if we. They always do, but I mean to make them aware that we are going to be talking about this. And you know, if anybody had anything they wanted to say, they could do it during present to speak.
I, I think they always can. I think that we could put something out just to say it's being considered. Um. Again, they've, they. I, I go, I, 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 I'm torn on this because they've had the opportunity to, to fill out a survey. Um. It's the, the board's decision to figure out how to. It, it's not like you got twenty responses. You got, for a Willington Public School survey. You got a lot of, you got a lot, a lot of responses. You really did.
They listened to our conversation and said something during present to speak. We would still have that to bring to our next policy meeting. When we write the policy and then take it back to the larger board for approval.
Right.
We still have that input.
What I could do, and, and this is something that is a little easier with, with me and board members could be there. They just couldn't participate because it would turn into a board meeting. Um, if we were going to pursue a specific option such as a yonder pouch, I could just do a parent Zoom night. Or a parent in-person night and just say, if you wanna learn more, I will be doing a presentation. Here are the things that we're thinking about. Here's a yonder pouch. This is how it works. This is how the, the thing, you know, the way the board is considering writing a policy. It's not, it would be beginning of the day to the end of the day, would impact your after-school clubs activities. If there was an emergency, here's how it would be addressed. If, you know, there, you needed midday transportation adjustments. Here's how you would handle that. We, I could do some of that PR work. Um. It wouldn't, I, I don't wanna say clog up a board meeting, but it could clog up a board meeting for people that just take their five minutes to say the same thing they said on the survey.
Yes, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Brianna, you had thoughts when I was reading here.
Oh no, is my face loud again? Listen, this is gonna be very unpopular and I'm worried about how it's gonna come across. That's why all the faces.
I, you think it's gonna be unpopular?
No, what I'm about to say.
Okay.
And what our job here is to make decisions and set policy. Is it important to me, I'll say me, is it important to me to know what the staff and the parents and the students think? Of course it is. But like Phil said, we sent out the survey. There's been an opportunity to participate. There's always opportunities to participate at the meetings. We have said many times how to find agendas and dates of meetings. And how to watch them later, how to get in touch with us. I feel like we've done an ample job of offering opportunity for parents to participate. And I don't think we need to keep trying to like reach out and get more of that, especially as Phil said, because of the response that we got back. There wasn't anything wrong with the way that went and we know that because it was very successful. Um, to the point where Arthur is able to take information, disaggregate it and make really awesome charts, which is super great. So thank you. Um, so. And I'm not worried about what you were just saying, Anne, about people getting involved. Like our job is to. Gather information, make the best decision that we think is best for the, this district. And then make, make like, make the choice. Um. That probably sounds a little bit harsh, but like that is our job. If we tried to reach out to people over and over. About every single decision that we're gonna make, like we're never gonna get anywhere. So we'll make a reasonable. Um, ask for people to participate, but then at some point, like we have to move forward.
Sounds good.
I could also, oh, sorry, Arthur, go ahead.
I don't disagree with you Brianna, but I will say that there is a undercurrent sentiment in town from the parents. That while they have the opportunity to be heard, they're really not heard. So I'm not advocating that Phil, you know, go on a PR, PR tour about this. Um, this to me, what I'm saying is actually kind of transitions to a different policy, I think we should look at. I really think we should look at the presence to speak policy at some point in the near future. Um, and another way to strike that balance is to free that up a little bit. Uh, I think if you, if you were able to do that, uh, you would probably get a lot more positive reception. But that's not for right now. But I, I don't think that we need, like I said, I don't think Phil needs to go on a PR tour about this. But I do think it needs to be brought up at a meeting where if anybody wanted the chance to maybe stress something they put in the survey. Or somebody didn't get a chance to do the survey, wants to say something at the meeting, they can. Um, but beyond that, I think that, I think that's fine.
Yeah, for sure. And I like your idea about bringing it back to the full board too, before proceeding at all, because it is such a hot topic. It's a big issue. It would involve money and so on, that yeah, definitely that everybody needs a chance to go over it before decide things.
Hmm.
It would be good. It would be good for Phil to do the PR tour once we've put the policy in place. So that parents know how it's gonna work. You know, once the policy is in place, then we are training the parents, training the kids.
I would do, what I, and this is what I'm, what I'm planning to do when I talk to yoners, obviously you get references, right? Cause you talk to the folks that have already done it and you ask what made it successful, what was, where were the struggles? I'll find those things out and just make, it could be something different in a different district, right? But um, I'll find out what the, you know, what made it successful and where the challenges were and I'll make sure we address those. Um, and I think, you know, it's, it's. It's, it's, it's a night, it's a, uh, you know, one presentation and. People show up and you want to answer questions. I'm glad to do that. I have no problem doing that. Um, but help people understand why, but. Is your, uh, I want to be clear. So you want to talk about this on Octo, uh, October, oof, August thirteenth. I can put this as a new item. And would you like me to, what I'm hearing you say is, present it as. A, the policy committee would like your feedback. This is what, one of the things that they're considering doing is. Is we now have costs for something called a yonder pouch. With the concept that we would be for middle school students getting yonder pouches. For a, basically a phone away for the day, seven thirty to two thirty and share. Cause I don't want to bounce all over with the board. I, I think that. Um, if you're not feeling comfortable with pouches and, uh, you know, the, the pocket chart in the classroom, I don't want to go there. Uh, I think that just gets uh, confusing for, for everybody. I think I'm hearing you say, we've considered a, a, a variety of things. This is where we're at. What are your thoughts on doing something like this?
I think if you present it as this is, this is the leading idea. And then, you know, you surround that with the cost and everything and then maybe if there's some pushback or some feedback or some. Concern about that, well, there's these other avenues we could take.
Is our meeting before or after the twelfth?
So my meeting with Yonder is the twelfth and our meeting is the thirteenth. They will have to get me pricing fast, but I'm sure that, I mean. They can whip that out really fast.
Right.
I'll tell them that, so.
Okay, I think one other piece to throw in there is the fact that there's likely to be some state. Um, decisions about this kind of a thing too. So it's not like we're just a town deciding to do it. Like at some point, we're gonna have to work within some guidelines anyway. So like, let's get something rolling and then adjust after that happens if it does.
Yeah, it's a hot topic and everyone's considering the topic, the direction you're considering.
Well, I would still be interested in teacher input.
In, in the application, we, so if we're going to decide on going to a yonder pouch. The teacher input would be in the, how do we build this routine to maximize efficiency? And we would do that through our team leaders group.
Alrighty.
Okay, thanks for all that feedback. I appreciate that. Um, so I'll add that to the agenda on the thirteenth. Uh, and then, so the only, only other policy that we had on here. Uh, so the equal opportunity, I'll get more for you for title line information. The administering medication, the um, the Narcan. You had already gone through that policy once. We were considering changing the name. Um, Arthur, you were gonna compare it to region nineteen. I did that already. Actually, a lot of the stuff is similar. Um, and all they did was just basically put it a, a section in that's really around Narcan. It's the same concept. Is there anything that's in that? And I'm glad, did, did Brenda send you that policy? Okay, sorry. Give me one second. Brenda and I have been passing as well on vacations here, so. Okay, so this is the policy, so um, that you've already reviewed. And this is something that you, I think, could consider bringing to the board. It, the thing that you were considering was the name. It's part of the administering medication policy. Um, or you could do it as your own. The way this stands right now. You could uh, build this as like, if you looked at our administering um, medication, it might be five, one, four, one, two. This could be five, one, four, one, two, one, three, and you could just do it like this. You know. Something like that. But it basically just has all the definitions of what it is. How it's used, you have to have the, how it's the nurse being uh, responsible for acquisition, storage and disposal. We would have that plan. We have to have a training plan. It's in there. And then if it's ever used, there's a communication uh, piece that's built into the policy of how it's used. And then also, there would be a section in our handbooks that would go into the handbooks with this. Uh, I thought you had seen this. There's not much more to that. If it's, you know, if it's administered, that it goes into a record. I have Chris Chinney looking at the legal always last because I want her to check it once it's done. The other thing that you were considering was the form. Um, and this is the form that came from uh, another district that uh. We would do something like that. This is, they have the right to refuse it. They'd have to do this on the front side. Uh, you'd basically do this with a handbook. But those are, were really the two things you're considering. So if you didn't have this policy. I'm glad to wait another uh, meeting. So if you want to review this, read this again. And maybe next time, make the final edits to it. And. Go from, and then move it to the full board. Does that make sense to you or what would you like to do?
Uh, I have a question about this one, Phil. In this policy, does it specify who could administer? Because that was kind of a point of contention at EO was. Uh, who could administer and how many people had the ability to do it? Um, is that, is that? Is that a concern in this policy or is that a concern in a different policy that's related to this?
No, it's this policy. So you have to select, um. You know, hey, here, this bar. You have to select.
Second paragraph, this policy permits, oh.
And whoever you train. So.
Yeah. There was a, up at the high school, there was a bit of a discussion if they wanted to. Put a number on this or as a percentage of. Like classrooms or as a percent, as make the number floating, like if it's a percentage of classrooms or as a percentage of number of students. Or something along those lines because. I don't, I don't think you can have everyone have the ability to do this because then I think everybody would have to have it. I don't think you can have that.
Correct. The other piece that you run into with this is that it has to be. Just if, just like you have your AEDs, this is supposed to be uh, accessible. Uh, for outside events. And for us, we would train. So if it was a rec, we would train rec and then they, they could identify if they wanted someone. But I would uh, keep this pretty specific to only a few people on the school side. Principals, uh, nurses, and then just like we do our crisis teams. This might be something where uh, maybe a school counselor or a um, social worker could be trained. But they have to agree to it as well. So typically you want your, you know, your nurses, but.
So I'm just thinking like in a, in a building like hall where you have several floors or in a building like center where you're kind of split winged. I was, you know, what I liked about EO was trying to get somebody. In each area, at least one person in a relative area. To agree to do the training and, and have this, have the ability to administer. So that way there's always somebody close by. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how deep into the weeds you want to get on this, but I, I, there is. There's a bit of legal concern, believe it or not, if somebody who's not. One of these selected personnel administers and save somebody's life, you could honestly get in trouble for that. And it's, it's crazy, but it's true. So.
Yeah, so why, I'm really not trying to be snarky at all. Why wouldn't you have all of your staff? Able to do so. They're all certified first aid, CPR, AED, EpiPen. How is it different?
All staff are not CPR, eh, first aid AD. They're not required to be. It's a choice.
Okay, so.
EpiPen is only if you're, you have somebody. We do EpiPen, I think, for everybody, actually.
Why limit it to a certain group of people?
Some people just don't want that responsibility and you can't force it on them, unfortunately.
Okay, I understand it being, yes, not mandatory, but the idea of just picking a few people. I don't understand why you want to expand that out.
You're saying, so this is what we have, what we have to do. It doesn't mean we couldn't open up, um. It doesn't mean we couldn't open up training to a bunch of other people, but at a minimum. We would have the principal trained, the nurse trained, the, you know, a few people. So those are the people that. You have to say are trained. Is that, is that what you're saying, Brianna?
Yeah, I just, and I'm thinking back to what Arthur just said about, you know, if you're not trained and you do it. Like I don't want to be making that decision when I'm looking at a kid flapping around on the ground. Like I want to know. I, I wanted to do this. I did the training. I'm gonna grab the thing. Let's do this.
I guess my, my real point was, do we want to consider putting a minimum number of people need to be trained to do this? That was, that was where I was going. That, that kind of got lost. I understand that. That looked bad, I don't know. That kind of got lost. We, um, there was a bit of concern when we did this policy EO about setting a minimum number of people in the school. Who have the ability to do this. And I don't know, I don't know if we want to set that here. But it was uh, just a concern that we had before and I wanted to bring it up here.
Yeah, okay. I totally get that. That makes sense to me too.
So the size of school, wise Arthur, I would, I would, um. Typically we do something, which is why I have an AED upstairs and an AED in the gym. I mirror that same concept. You, you get a health or PE teacher that you, you request, would you be willing to do this training? And then you have somebody upstairs in the same situation. Cause that's typically, you, you don't want to have to travel far. If you know anything about this, it's like the number of seconds before. Uh, you know, or it's really, I think it's two minutes. It's, it's, you know, if you deliver the dose. Under a certain amount of time, it's significantly more successful.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, that's the idea, uh. You just have to make sure that you have them in stock and that they're, that, you know. They're accessible.
Right.
I agree, Phil, when you said that three people, I, to me, that would be the minimum and you add the PE teacher if they're willing for four. Um, because if somebody's out of the building, if the principal and the nurse happen to be out on the same day. You know, you still have two other people in the building that could do it.
Yeah, and there's, I, there's always gonna be good Samaritan law. I mean. Even if you're uh, not certified in CPR and you're doing your best and you're following directions and doing something. You're still gonna be protected. This is no different. Uh, this is just the, the piece that we're trying to. Have, if they are available, this is who we will want administering. I will find out, um. I didn't see anything in EO's about the, did they ever, I, I don't remember seeing a, a, a number though. I just, I just read.
No, we never, we never settled on a number. It's one of those things that kind of, it made me a bit uncomfortable. Only because the number could be two, the number could be one, the number could be twenty, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it was like. I'd, I'd rather know that more people have the ability to do it than less. But we never ended up settling on a number. So it, I'm, if you're comfortable moving forward without it here, I was just, again, it was just a concern that happened there. I wanted to bring it up here.
So I can, I can, uh, maybe what we can do is adjust the line in here just to say. Training will be open to all school personnel interested in receiving the, the training. The, so that would be part of it. And then the other part could be. If you want to add in someone at the, the. What I'll call ground level. That, uh, uh, cause I mean, let's face it, we're talking about hall. Center school is so small that it's, it's, everything is right there. It's hall school. That's so, you know, from upstairs to downstairs is, is, is a bit. So.
You could have an at least clause to make sure there's, like Arthur said, a minimum number. Of maybe that three or four we talked about. And then the more, the better beyond those numbers, but at least those numbers would cover it.
And you have that right now because it says any other individual authorized by me. So, I mean, I could say, hey, this is part of your, you know. Something you have to do. It's kind of like the crisis team. Like we have, we have a crisis people that we recruit for the crisis team. They don't get anything extra for it. Uh, but they come a run in when something's going on. And they have, receive additional training as part of being a member of that team.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't have to add anything. You know, I might be getting too specific about it, which is, I want to do, trust me. So it's, it's, you know. Not a big deal.
I mean, even if it's not in there, it's still a really good point and something for, to be considered, yeah.
Yeah, must consider, yep.
Phil, that is an idea too to have, if they're willing, have the crisis team be trained.
Yeah, well, and that's what we would talk about, cause I could have, uh. This is, uh, uh, ends up honestly becoming part of your handbook, the staff handbook. It's actually part of the student handbook too, it would be, but. So do you want, let's, you want to read this and revisit this one more time then? So I'll, I'll make sure you have this policy. If you have any comments about it. I'll check in with, um. Chris Chaney one more time and make sure that we're not missing something in this. I've compared this to numerous other policies. Some, some of them just get, are way too wordy. Uh, they're harder to, to apply. This is straight into the point. And then next meeting, if you make your final changes and send it off to the full board, probably I would say, uh. Uh, it could be September.
Meanwhile, you, you, someone can be giving the Narcom, Narcan if needed, right? It's not dependent on the policy.
A, a nurse can still do it.
Okay, good. Kids are covered.
The only thing I could say is we could bring this to the board at this meeting. And basically review it together and vote on, you know, bring it to fir, bring it for first view in August and vote on it in September.
That's fine. If you want, you could also read it over the next couple of days and give me feedback on it. Just email me if you want to do that. If you have any changes, do you want to do that?
I mean, this isn't a long, longer complicated policy, so.
No, it's not. And honestly, this form isn't even really part of the policy. It's an administrative reg. I just show you. So this wouldn't really be part of the policy. It's just how, the type of thing that I would utilize. So you know, you could see it as part, the type of thing we're gonna do. That we would be collecting this information.
I mean, personally, I'm comfortable if you want to bring this to the board for first read in August and then vote on it in September.
Brianna, Anne?
I would agree. And, and we could make any changes that we suggest at that meeting as would the other members.
Right.
Okay, I can do that. Okay, stop sharing this then, so then. So I still have, I'll get the bullying information from Chris, cause I want to make sure that's all legal. They just changed the definition again, I think. I swear that's every year. And the future agenda items. So we have the, we'll be dealing with the cellphone thing for a little bit. I'll come back to the title nine stuff. I'll come back to the bullying stuff. I still have the use of, of a private, private vehicle. The five-year plan might be solved eventually if we, depending on our, what our framework looks like with the board framework. I didn't hear any feedback about that. I have visits to school on here, which is something else. It's on a, a, on a list of review. And then uh, present to speak is, is something that's on my list as well, Arthur, and trying to find a, a way. So that's. Do you have any issues if I set policy meetings on a monthly basis? Uh, through the year and is there a day that you can tell me, hey, this would be really good if you s, I'm typically free on. Do you know those t, dates yet for like sports and gymnastics and all those things yet? Do you want to wait until August hits and then go, hey, let's, let's set them? Do you want to wait until August hits and then go, hey, let's, let's set them down? Does that work better for you?
I can tell you, I'm typically not free on Mondays and that's about it. If, especially if we keep the Zoom option open, you know, I could usually zoom in from just about anywhere. But Mondays are not, are very bad for me. Besides that.
Reality, Anne?
Wednesday is a good possibility for me. I think Monday and Tuesday, not so good. Brianna, how about you? Is that a practice?
Um, my, I used, uh, when I stay after at work, it's on, it's been on Thursdays for several years in a row and I don't anticipate that would change. Um, those are done at four thirty. So, and I'm right down the road. So even if we had to be in person, I can zoom up seventy-four. Um, and I don't know the athletic schedule yet, but there's another grown up at my house was perfectly capable of driving out. To that gym, so we can make it work.
So maybe what I can do is i- if I just heard you all say Wednesdays look okay. Right now, I mean, I can give you some raw dates. You don't have to publish them. You know, I can, I can try and give you a Wednesdays for the year and just say, hey, let's, this is what we're gonna aim for. Uh, and then. It's at least we have something as a whole of the calendar on a monthly basis. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Let's try and hammer shoot through some policies this year, so.
How is it gonna be until we get to that public to speak one?
That that's up to you. You can move it, you can move to the the first one, that your next policy meeting if you want.
Yeah, that's been kind of floating on the table for a long time and, um, I would love to move that up if possible.
Yeah, agreed.
We can make changes to how we do that. Without unofficial policy, can't we? No?
You can suspend policies at a meeting.
And kind of do it our way or try some ways?
There's a variety of ways you can do it, but you could, you have to, you would have to vote to suspend a policy. Or you could create and adjust the policy to say, board chair has the right to adjust this. You know, respond to at present to speak is one voice for the board. There's, there's a variety of things you could do for president to speak. Sometimes people just want the answer right then and there, and that's all they're looking for. They get nothing.
Yeah, and sometimes it's not, it's hard to not just give them the answer because you sit there and you know it, right? So maybe that's something the full board, I think we're on a similar page about it, but it might be good to. Just circle around the table real quick and see what people think or how they think it would work best. And then. Even if we can't change a po- change policy for like legit, then maybe we can just at least start trying some stuff. Especially like starting a new school year. That's a good time to try some things. Um, there's an election coming around. That's another kind of. Switch it up moment. I don't want to see that on like our policy committee's agenda in like April and now we know it's a problem. And we're like still just not getting to it, like, let's work, okay.
I'll try and come up with just a few different structures just to, as examples. That way, at least you have some talking points. Like, here's, here's some ideas. And I can, I will try and book, um. August is gonna come, go fast, to be honest with you. I'll try and find something, but. It's, it's a a wacky month getting ready for that first group. So let me see what I can.
You know what? The thought that's crossing my mind is. If we were to have it so that you could answer a question with a statement. But not start a whole conversation. Do you know what I mean?
The kind of stuff we need to kind of throw out and then see where we want to jump off from.
Yeah, I could definitely do that. All right, that's all that we had today unless you have something else that's tied to this agenda. All right, moving forward, we are done at five thirty-three PM. I'm gonna click stop report. They moved this button. Have a good night.